Good afternoon. The September 21st, 2020 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:05 PM. I'm Lorna Gonzalez, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis.
President.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Musceta.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Sawat.
Here.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Councilmember Juarez.
Here.
Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Presentations. Councilmember Herbold, you are recognized in order to present the proclamation on diaper need awareness week. And then after you present your proclamation, I will need to suspend the rules to allow our guests to address the council. So if you could just take a quick pause before handing it over to our guests, so that I can go through that procedural step, that would be appreciated. You are on mute. Thank you, Council President Gonzalez. So as the Chair of the Committee with Oversight on Human Services Issues, I'm super proud to present an annual proclamation signed by all nine council members, with the mayor concurring, proclaiming September 21st through September 27th to be Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city of Seattle. I thank my colleagues and the mayor for the support of this national effort. Diaper need is a lack of sufficient supply of diapers to keep a baby clean, dry, and healthy. This proclamation is part of a national effort to bring attention to a health issue that affects one in three families in the United States. Low-income families pay up to 14% of their income just for disposable diapers. Westside Baby estimates that a healthy supply of diapers for a newborn costs approximately $75 to $100 per month, much too costly for many families making the minimum wage. A 2017 survey showed 23% of King County families found it difficult to afford diapers for their children. Black families, indigenous families, and families of color are disproportionately impacted by diaper need in the Seattle area. 61% of Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander families are struggling to afford diapers, three times the average, and 42% of Black African American families are experiencing diaper need 19% higher than the average. Westside Baby is a nonprofit in the district I represent, District One, that meets the needs for diapers among families across our whole city. Last year, Westside Baby distributed 1.5 million diapers to Seattle families. In just the first six months of the year, they've already distributed over 1 point million diapers. COVID and the socioeconomic effects of the pandemic have severely amplified that need. To help meet the increased need, Westside Baby is collecting donations of diapers and wipes. Now, you can participate in one of two ways. One, online through its wish list, or secondly, by dropping off items at the West Center, I'm sorry, White Seattle, White Center hub at 102 14th Avenue Southwest on Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, or at its Southlake Union branch at 435 8th North on Mondays from 10:00 to 2:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Unopened boxes of diapers are what is requested, only unopened boxes of diapers. A diaper drive is a great way to show support during Diaper Need Awareness Week, and you can learn more about meeting diaper need at westsidebaby.org/diaperneed. Tony Sarge is the Public Affairs Manager at Westside Baby, and she's here to accept the Diaper Need Awareness Proclamation and share her thoughts. And with that, I hand it back over to Council President Gonzalez to facilitate the waiving of the rules. Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbold, for those remarks and for bringing this annual proclamation forward. Okay, colleagues, if there is no objection, the council rules will be suspended to allow brief remarks from Tony Sarge to address us on behalf of Westside Baby. Hearing no objection, the rules are suspended, and we're going to go ahead and recognize our guest from Westside Baby, Tony Sarge, who is going to provide us with some comments. So, welcome, and please, we're excited to have you here and excited to hear some remarks from you about this important proclamation.
Thank you, Council President Gonzalez, and thank you, Councilmember Herbold, for acknowledging diaper need awareness week this year. After many years of doing this, we really appreciate your support. As Councilmember Herbold mentioned, my name is Tony Sarge. I'm the Public Affairs Manager at Westside Baby. We've been honored to serve the families in Seattle and surrounding King County area with diapers and hygiene items for babies and children since 2001. We've been especially grateful to be able to do this work over the last six months while our community has dealt with the compounding public health crisis of the COVID-19 pandemic. As Councilmember Herbold mentioned, on average, in our community, one in four families are experiencing diaper need, and that disproportionate rate is absolutely impacting Black families, indigenous families, and families of color due to systemic racism. This disparity has only been increased by the socioeconomic effects of the pandemic. We have been increased our diaper distribution by over 82% over the same time period last year. So as Councilmember Herbold mentioned, we typically distribute close to 1.5 million diapers for the full year. We've already almost reached that number by the summer, and so we're seeing that increased need absolutely due to the pandemic and could not do the work we're doing and continue to distribute the diapers at the rate we're distributing them without the continued support of the council and the community. So, thank you so much on behalf of Westside Baby, our colleagues, my colleagues, and our community for acknowledging this week, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony, for all your work. Please do give our best to the folks over at Westside Baby. Really appreciate all the work that they do for the community. Colleagues, any other comments before we say goodbye to Tony? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much for being with us. You're welcome to hang up now and leave the meeting, and we look forward to continuing to support the work of Westside Baby. Take care. Okay, folks, approval of the minutes. The minutes of the City Council meetings of September 8th and 14th, and minutes of the City Council's special meeting of September 15th, 2020, have been reviewed. If there's no objection, the minutes will be signed. That was not an objection. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes? Adoption of the referral calendar. I move to adopt the proposed introduction and referral calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, councilmembers, it has been moved and seconded to approve the proposed introduction and referral calendar. I do have one amendment, as I discussed this morning during council briefing. I have a proposed bill to add to the published introduction and referral calendar. That was not distributed by 5:00 PM on Friday, and before I can move to amend the introduction and referral calendar, the council rule relating to circulation of a bill for introduction will need to be suspended. If there is no objection, the council rule relating to circulation of a bill by 5:00 PM on the preceding business day will be suspended. Hearing no objection, the council rule is suspended, and I'll move forward with proposing an amendment to the introduction and referral calendar. I move to amend the proposed introduction and referral calendar by introducing Council Bill 119900 entitled "An Ordinance Related to the City's Response to the 2020 COVID-19 Crisis," amending ordinance 12600, which adopted the 2020 budget, changing appropriations to various departments and budget control levels, and from various funds in the budget, imposing provisos, aggregating positions, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts, all by a two-thirds vote of the City Council, and referring it to the City Council. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments on the amendment to the introduction and referral calendar? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Musceta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
Thank you. The motion carries, and the introduction and referral calendar is amended. Are there any further comments on the introduction and referral calendar as amended? I understand, Councilmember Peterson, you would like to make an amendment, so I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to you.
Thank you, Council President. I was informed by the clerk of an issue on the introduction and referral calendar. It's item 12. It just needs to be changed from a council bill to a resolution. It was just misnamed in one location, so I would move to amend the introduction and referral calendar, item 12, by changing the file type from a council bill to a resolution and assigning it resolution number 31971.
There a second?
Second.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any additional comments on the amendment? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Musceta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
Thank you. The motion carries, and the introduction and referral calendar is amended. Are there any further comments on the introduction and referral calendar as amended? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the introduction and referral calendar as amended?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Musceta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
Thank you so much. The introduction and referral calendar is adopted as amended. Approval of the agenda. I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda. Councilmember Morales, you are recognized in order to move your motion to amend the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda by removing item 15, which is Appointment 1518, and item 16, which is Appointment 1619, from the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to remove items 15 and 16. Are there any additional comments? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Musceta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The amendment is adopted, and the agenda is amended. Councilmember Strauss, I understand you have an amendment to the agenda and are recognized in order to move your amendment.
Thank you, Council President. At council briefing today, I noted some of the agenda items within the purview of the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee would be held until next week, and it has come to my attention the time sensitivity of one item I hope to walk onto the agenda today. This is a landmark designation of the Via Communi building in the University District, and I move to amend the agenda by adding Council Bill 119889 entitled "An Ordinance Relating to a Historic Preservation: Imposing Controls Upon the Via Communi Landmark Designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board" under Chapter 2512 of the Seattle Municipal Code, and adding to it to the table of historical landmarks contained in the Chapter 25.32 of Seattle Municipal Code, and by placing it after Agenda Item 2.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda by adding Council Bill 119889 after Item 2. Are there any additional comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Musceta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The amendment is adopted, and the agenda is amended. Are there any further comments on the agenda? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amended agenda?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Musceta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The motion carries, and the agenda is amended, as amended, is adopted. Public comment. At this time, we are going to open the remote public comment period for items on the City Council agenda, introduction and referral calendar, and the council's 2020 work program. We are going to go ahead and proceed with public comment in the following way. Before I do that, I just want to reiterate that it does remain our strong intent to continue to have public comment regularly included on meeting agendas. However, of course, we continue to reserve the right to enter or eliminate public comment periods at any point if we deem that this system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and in a manner in which we are able to conduct our necessary business. Public comment period for this meeting is 20 minutes, and each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I'll call on each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the council's website. If you've not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to the council's website at seattle.gov/council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L. The public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt of you have been unmuted will be the speaker's cue that it is their turn to speak, and the speaker must press star 6 to begin speaking. Again, in order for us to hear you, once you hear the prompt of you have been unmuted, you need to hit star 6 so that we can hear you. Please begin speaking by stating your name, an item that you are addressing, and as a reminder, public comment should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction referral calendar, or the council's 2020 work program. At about 10 seconds, speakers will hear a chime. That chime means that you have 10 seconds left to wrap up your comments. If you don't end your comments within the allotted time, your microphone will be muted in order to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you've completed your public comment, we ask that you please disconnect from the line, and if you plan to continue following this meeting, we ask that you do so via Seattle Channel or any one of the listening options listed on the agenda. We're going to go ahead and open up the public comment period. We'll begin with the first speaker on the list. Again, I would remind the speakers to hit star 6 in order for us to actually be able to hear you. So, we are going to start with Julia Pashuto, followed by Leah Lucid.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Julia Pashuto, and I'm here representing Puget Sound Sage and the Race and Social Equity Task Force, and speaking on Council Bill 119887 to create a permanent EDI Advisory Board. Since 2018, the Race and Social Equity Task Force and the interim advisory board have made requests from the mayor and the council for a permanent board that retains the community self-determination principles outlined in the EDI plan. To date, the interim board has played a critical role in the rollout of the city's most acclaimed anti-displacement strategy, the Equitable Development Initiative, and we've developed and stewarded a community accountable capacity and capital funding process that has resulted in over $21 million awarded to BIPOC-led, low-income housing, cultural space services, and businesses through anti-displacement projects and activities. The interim advisory board has always been a placeholder for a permanent structure, and the need for a permanent community-driven board is greater than ever. We need to deepen and grow resources and infrastructure to attend to impacts of COVID-19 and the displacement crisis. We call on you to pass the EDI Advisory Board legislation as amended by the Community Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Leah Lucid, followed by Catherine Manbeck.
Hello, my name is Leah Lucid, and I'm a constituent in District 4. I am asking that you all hold the line and override the mayor's veto to the rebalanced 2020 budget. This is a vital first step to ensure divesting from SPD starts now alongside crucial reinvestments in Black and Indigenous communities. This legislation has already passed. I'm asking you to hold strong in the face of the mayor's obstructionist and racist attempts to reshape it. Durkin's pro-cop deal guts the advances made as a result of the uprising this summer in defense of Black lives. It dishonors the Black lives lost to police violence, including here in Seattle. For District 4, Peterson, say her name, Charlina Lyles. This so-called compromise also dishonors our houseless neighbors, who are disproportionately people of color and have been violently harassed by the navigation teams who destroy their belongings with disregard. We get D4 for Black Lives, and several other volunteer-run mutual aid groups have been providing mutual aid to try to fill the void of governmental aid during the recent smoke crisis, and we've witnessed firsthand the devastation and cruelty of these inhumane sweeps that our council member Peterson shamefully supports. To Peterson, Strauss, and Lewis, the white men of the City Council, please do not be the roadblock here for our Black and Indigenous community. Please also, council, look into whether Lewis has a conflict of interest in his personal life in supporting police officers over Black lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, on the list is Catherine Manbeck, followed by Michael Malini.
Hi, my name is Catherine Manbeck. I am a constituent of Andrew Lewis in District 7. Thirty days ago, Jenny Durkin vetoed emergency budget readjustments that were unanimously supported by the City Council. As a King County District 7 resident, I identified two important aspects of the budget adjustment proposed. First, in the budget adjustment, we saw council members offering a down payment on removing a system of oppression supported by Seattle Police Department that marginalizes and kills Black and Brown people. They did this largely by cutting the Seattle Police Department Navigation Team, a team which does nothing but harm Black and Brown community members. Second, we saw council members propose to use the Rainy Day Fund to provide COVID relief. The Rainy Day Fund was established as a way to respond to unanticipated need in Seattle. We live in a time of a global pandemic and large-scale civil unrest. This is indeed a time of unprecedented need. Jenny Durkin's veto of this budget is appalling and unattuned to our global situation. I understand that Councilmember Lewis is on the fence about overriding Jenny Durkin's insulting and troubling veto to the proposed budget adjustment, and I am calling on Lewis and other council members, particularly those with white privilege, to invest in Black and Indigenous communities by holding yourselves and Jenny Durkin accountable and overriding the veto of the proposed budget readjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Michael Malini, followed by Rebecca Smith.
Hello, my name is Michael Malini. I'm a resident in District 3, and I'm just calling for the council to override the mayor's revised 2020 budget veto. The council has already approved of this. There is no reason to be backtracking, and you should stick firm with the decisions you've made to push for change in our city rather than just having done it for publicity reasons and then backtracking. Continue to defund SPD for 2020 and into 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rebecca Smith, followed by Steffi Johnson-Tulliver.
Hi, good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Rebecca Smith. I am a constituent of Tammy Morales in District 2. I'm calling to make a case for you, councilmembers, to override Durkin's veto on the 2020 rebalance budget. I would like to briefly mention some statistics that I've pulled from the seattle.gov website about crime committed in the city of Seattle in 2020. So, of the total crime committed, 89% is property crime, and of that 89%, 99.5% of those crimes are larceny, theft, burglary, and motor vehicle theft, which are all crimes committed due to a lack of access to resources, crimes committed due to a need. And then we're going to look at the violent crime, which is 11% of the total crimes committed in Seattle in 2020. And of those, we have aggravated assault representing 61%, which again, we have a crime committed due to lack of access to mental health resources, and then robbery representing 32% of that, again, crime based out of need. So, what I would like to really shed light on is that to call in police, who are heavily armed and militarized, does not do anything to address the lack of resources that is fueling the overwhelming majority of these crimes. But what we can do to address those issues directly is to defund the police department and reallocate that money to vulnerable communities, specifically Black and BIPOC communities, so that we can create programs that will give us access to resources, and that way we can actually make a positive change and have a positive effect, and hopefully see a decrease in crime. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. And the next up is Steffi Johnson-Tulliver, followed by Madeline Coily. Is Speaker Number 11 with us? If you are, just remember to hit star 6 so we can hear you. Steffi Johnson-Tulliver, are you with us? Oh, oh. Are you there? Okay, tech, let's go ahead and go to the next speaker, Madeline Coily, followed by Jerome and Sia.
Hi, my name is Madeline Coily, and I am a resident of District 7. I would like to encourage the City Council to override the mayor's veto tomorrow. I'm incredibly disappointed and frustrated that the council is contemplating not overriding the veto. The 2020 rebalancing package that was passed by council in August is the bare minimum. This new compromise package that was mentioned this morning is completely unacceptable. It's completely backtracking and watering down anything that could have actual meaningful impact. Not only is it totally inadequate, the new legislation comes out with such short notice that we, the public, have barely any time to actually read through it and form an opinion. The mayor vetoed the 2020 rebalancing package nearly a month ago, yet council has waited until the last moment to show where they stand. Please don't disappoint us tomorrow, and please override the mayor's veto. Thank you. I owe my time.
Next is Jerome and Sia, followed by Tilshon Turner.
Hi, good evening, councilmember. My name is Jerome. I'm a constituent of District 3. I would like to report that illegal gambling, drugs, fights, and yelling at night at GRLD Park in Madison Valley. So, we moved to Madison Valley about a year ago, right next to the lovely GRLD Park. We really enjoyed the place, and it brought full of young family and kids. Eight weeks ago, the park took a turn for the worse. Illegal gambling, looking access to the park, daily drug deals, yelling at night from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM, waking up constantly in my nine-month-old daughter. I called the police on those issues, but they did not take any action, and the problem kept getting worse. The illegal camps have not been removed. Because of COVID situation, I reached out the navigation team, their backlog, they didn't take any action. This park is very small, and homeless are living on top of each other. So, this is not a way to spread and prevent the COVID, but instead is increasing the COVID because of the closeness- COVID because of the closeness of the people. Could you take action in the hope of saving the nights of my nine-month-old's daughter and removing those camps? We need a feedback. Thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next up is Tilshon Turner, followed by Kathy Tuttle.
Hi, this is Tilshon Turner, or better known as TK from the Everyday March. So here's why you guys really need to do what you guys said you were going to do and keep doing that. I got thirteen stitches to prove why you should, in case you didn't have enough reasons before. Yeah, me personally, thirteen stitches in my head from SPD. There's thirteen reasons right there why you need to keep doing what you're doing, SPD, regardless of what they're talking about. See, because apparently, everybody seems to be under this umbrella, like, oh, well, maybe they'll fix themselves. They're not going to fix themselves. It's only getting worse. Clearly, it's only getting worse. So how about we hunker down on our promises and keep those promises? Because I tell you right now, I got thirteen stitches, thirteen reasons for why you should keep your promises. Really, dead seriously. And I got some glue to prove why, too, and a messed up leg and some ribs that are messed up, too, to prove why you should keep your promise and to keep defunding SPD. Because if you don't, this is going to keep happening to Black and Brown and Indigenous people, like it's been happening for years. Stop caving into the pressures of the mayor and everybody else's bull crap and hunker down on your promise and keep your promise, so that nobody else has to end up with thirteen stitches in their head or wake up in the middle of the night screaming and jumping because of the PTSD that came from that incident. So please, for me and for everybody else in these communities, the Black and Brown and Indigenous communities, hunker down on your promise and keep it. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Tuttle, followed by Jesse Huey.
Hi, council members. This is Kathy Tuttle from Wallingford, speaking in support of Resolution 31933, the Carbon Note Resolution that requires council staff to give you information on the embedded and the embodied carbon of projects you're going to vote for after January of 2021. I wanted to say that this resolution is far from perfect, but it's a great first step to help you evaluate local projects and the carbon they'll emit when they're being built and when they're in operation. Many local green groups were consulted and have been able to quickly endorse this resolution involving Climate Solutions, Fridays for Future Seattle, the Transit Riders Union, Forty Third District Democrats Environmental Caucus. I want to say that the carbon note in no way substitutes for local, regional, and national policy that creates dense and resilient cities. You know that we need transit-rich, walkable, fifteen-minute neighborhoods. You know we need congestion pricing. We need great walk, bike, and transit options. We need to be building a dense variety of housing types for all people of all incomes and all ethnicities. This resolution just provides you with one piece of information that you, as council members, can use to make your important decisions on how to invest city money and bring us ever closer to a thriving, resilient Seattle that includes all of us. Thanks for your support.
Thank you for calling in. I'm going to call on Jesse Huey now, and if IT could let me know if you've resolved the issue with Speaker Number Eleven, that'd be great. Jesse.
Hi, my name's Jesse Huey, and I'm a District Two voter, and I'm calling with regards to clear demands of the people of Seattle to defund the Seattle Police Department starting in the 2020 budget. As the initial budget passed by city council only makes minor adjustments to a police department that is proven incapable of humane or constitutional policing, it is clear that the mayor's veto signals a complete unwillingness to address the deadly threat that SPD poses to Black, Brown, and Indigenous peoples and the total ignorance to the numerous community-based programs that could be funded to provide real public health and safety, which we desperately need. If the mayor refuses to acknowledge the people in the streets or the stories of the countless victims of Seattle's police violence, it is imperative that the city council override the mayor's veto and set about the work of developing a 2021 budget that fully responds to the needs of the people of Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you. And then IT, can you let me know if Steffi Johnson-Tolliver is still on the line?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and see if we can hear from Speaker Number Eleven. And if you're with us, we need you to hit star six on your phone so we can hear you. Let's try that one more time, Steffi. Star six. Okay, go ahead. I think we can hear you now. We are continuing to have issues with caller Number Eleven's audio. I'm still not able to hear the caller, so we're going to try to come back. I apologize. Thanks for your patience there, but we're going to go ahead and call on Howard Gale, and then we'll hear from Eric Barnett.
Hi, excuse me. This is Howard Gale from Lower Queen Anne, District Seven, speaking on police accountability. On Friday, the Office of Police Accountability released its first report on a very tiny fraction of a hundred days and continuing of police abuse. The OPA has ignored and absolved the SPD of its most egregious abuses. Yet, at this morning's council briefing, what does the head of Public Safety, Councilmember Herbold, talk about? Does she express concern at the abject failure of our police accountability system? No. Instead, she talks about last Thursday's Washington Post article regarding the growing threat of memes on the left. This article is not about actual injuries to people, but rather memes and spurious claims about their relation to property destruction. Compare this to the death and serious injury that have been regularly meted out by the right wing and by the police. A recent Time magazine article reports over ninety-three percent of the protests have been peaceful, with virtually all of what is called violence targeting property and not people. Councilmember Herbold would like to draw our attention away from the professionals, the professional people, the police, who we continue to pay to hurt citizens and to bridge our civil liberties, and instead, in gender, are concerned for extremely limited acts of violence from people who we do not pay and whom we have no control over. This is the kind of slanderous, red-baiting misinformation we would expect from Trump, not from the head of our Public Safety Committee. This is a clear warning to all of us that the post-George Floyd wokeness is rapidly wearing off of our council members. Please, defund the police, counteract the mayor's veto tomorrow, and move on defunding our accountability system, which has no accountability. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Eric Barnett, and then Maisha Barnett.
Hi, this is Eric Barnett, and I'm calling from the Central District in about the streets between Thirty-Fourth East Union and Thirty-Fifth East Union Streets in honor of the contributions, sacrifice, and hard work that my father, Douglas Q. Barnett, put into his dream of theater for the sole purpose of the advancement and opportunity of Black people to dance, act, and show their talents. And in a time in our history when society said that Black people were not supposed to be anything but maids, butlers, and servants in the theater, he succeeded in starting the first theater for the arts in the Northwest, in the whole Northwest. Black Arts West provided a platform for young Black people, Black kids, to have somewhere to go and show off their stuff and their many talents. Many of them went on to have successful careers in show business and have traveled all over the world. As a Black pioneer family of Douglas Q. Barnett, we consider it an honor to name the street for his hard work in this racially troubled time. We think it is your duty to just do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Maisha Barnett, followed by Erin Wilson.
Hi, my name is Maisha Barnett, and I am commenting on Resolution 31968. I fully support the nomination of Douglas Q. Barnett Street, East Union Street between Thirty-Fourth Avenue and Thirty-Fifth Avenue. As the son and grandson of Northwest Black pioneers, my father forged his own path to establish a rich legacy of Black theater in the Pacific Northwest. His passion for the arts and theater spanned decades and influenced countless individuals and organizations that continue to thrive today, organizations such as Langston Hughes Performing Arts Institute, the Central District Forum for Arts and Ideas, the Hansberry Project, Historic Central Area, I'm sorry, the Historic Central Area Arts and Cultural District, and New Black Arts West. Approval of this resolution would recognize his commitment and vast contributions to the arts, the city, and the region. Thank you for your consideration. I yield my time.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Erin Wilson, followed by Simon Williams. Simon Williams on the line?
We lost a caller.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from...
Stand by. I think we have it back.
Hello, I want to say I support CB119881 to construct transit-only lanes and improve the bike lanes. I also support RES31933 to consider climate change and requirements for summary and fiscal notes. I'd also like to advocate to defund the police by fifty percent to end the police brutality and also to invest in community care. That budget, there's so much money that could be used to provide housing and mental health assistance for people who need it. I'd also like to advocate for ranked choice voting, which can allow people to choose from five candidates and can allow for more, better democracy, which is something that our country was built on. Democracy is very important. And to consider lowering the voting age to twelve, because kids are the people who grow up in this world and declare climate emergency to save the salmon and lower carbon emissions to zero by 2025. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in, Simon. Next up is Erin Wilson. Erin, if you're with us.
Hi, my name is Erin.
Go ahead.
You can hear me.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Erin. Okay. My name is Erin Wilson. I'm a member of the Fourth District. I'm calling today in support of overriding the mayor's veto. I'm in absolute shame of the stylistic and the inability to listen to the city council demonstrated. The fact that the compromise budget is even being considered as a compromise, I could not be more embarrassed by your performance of promises and your shameless gaven to the mayor and SPD. You repeatedly made promises, listened to the community, only get back down whenever you get the opportunity. I don't know if this is because the people stopped pressuring you to refine the support and then later pulled a plug, that your constituents are as stupid as the county council members are. You have the opportunity to turn on you to make it on a tiny semblance of the demands the Black community are making. Budgets that you and the council pass near unanimously doesn't give, I mean, come close to addressing the mayor's issue, systemic racism, institutional injustice, and legalized gang violence is a significant department, but at least is one step in the right direction. I don't understand how anyone knowingly votes the community insane human behavior that is sweet for the houses run by SPD's navigation team. You have watched the videos of Seattle Police Department mercilessly destroying everything the houses people have, arresting the people who are trying to provide physical aid where the city has failed visibly to meet their needs, absolutely mocking everyone providing that support by eating the food that was donated to them by the community. I honestly do not know how you play yourself, to me. You're in the midst of a restorative pandemic, two days removed from a week of active care. The mayor's resolution with the city council endorsed this compromise budget is to continually end with civilization of people who are most directly affected by those two things. Some of the city council was able to find ways to keep every budget in the city as a result of COVID's for health, but somehow cannot even find a semblance of budget rebalance when SPD is considered. Result of this rebalancing is that while in promises, in promises to fund, the police budget as a share of the city budget is actually increasing, disturbs nothing other than unfolding the cruel behavior SPD has been exhibiting, and they know that there are no compromises for their behavior. Your single support for SPD's cruel and inhumane behavior every time you walk back at defunding promise, I don't know what you think the compromise is, but taking and ignoring the demands of the city in favor of everything our absolute guilty mayor says is not a compromise. Do not work this city or its people. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. We have exceeded our twenty minutes for public comment allocation this morning. We do have a handful of speakers left on the list. I'd say about five or six. So I'm going to, if there's no objection, I'm going to extend the public comment to allow us to finish getting through the list here. I think it will probably only be about another five or six minutes. I am going to ask that the timer be adjusted to a one-minute allocation for public comments so that we can dig into the items of business on our agenda. So let's go ahead and change that timer to one minute. Thank you so much. And we'll go ahead and hopefully finish the list here. So Andrea Cowpen-Sanderson is next, and then we'll hear from Kelsey McGrath.
Thank you, council president and members. I'm Andrea Cowpen-Sanderson, the CEO of Bird Bar Place, and I'm here to speak in support of the transfer of Fire Station Twenty-Three from the city to Bird Bar Place, Council Bill 119886. Since nineteen sixty-four, Bird Bar Place has supported our vulnerable residents in Seattle with a variety of human services. Each day, we help people in so many ways, a bag of food for our hungry father and his children, energy assistance to turn heat on back in a senior's home, housing assistance to keep a student from getting evicted, as well as policy assistance changed on behalf of Black Washingtonians. Bird Bar Place is not only a valuable resource to low-income and other vulnerable residents, but a living testament to our Black community and our resilience and many pillars of well-being that we fall behind on. With this transfer, we finally get to ensure that our building and our safety and sustainability of our programs are provided for, and as we think about physiognically retrofitting our building and the safety of our community, making it more ADA accessible, and also to ensure the economic mobility, the cultural acknowledgement, and preservation of our Black people. On behalf of our board and our staff, we thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you, Andrea, for calling in today. Next up is Kelsey McGrath, and then we will hear from Eternally12, Mariah Carey, reincarnated rainbow album helmetless cyclist, polyamorous, compassing four brother husbands plus.
I'm Kelsey McGrath, renter and teacher in District Three. I'm calling today to urge the city council to override the mayor's veto. The compromise put forth is unacceptable and anti-Black. You all pledged in June your support for Black Lives Matter in defunding SPD by minimally fifty percent. Councilmember Peterson said, "We need actions, not just words." Councilmember Gonzalez said, "Now is the time to divest from the police department. Now is the time to zero out these budgets and to reimagine, rebuild." You all voted on amendments that notably fell short of the movement's demands, but at least made several strides in decreasing the funding and scale of SPD by eliminating the NAVS team and putting seventeen million dollars to BIPOC communities. The compromise on the table is pro-police and is an insult to the organizers, activists, and protesters that have been putting their lives on the line for the last few months and for many for years. I call on you to override the mayor's veto and follow through on your commitments to defund SPD and reinvest in our BIPOC communities.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Speaker Number Twenty-Eight, and then we are going to try one more time with Steffi Johnson-Tolliver.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, this is Eternally12, tree hugger Mariah Carey, reincarnated rainbow album, high note or low note, depending on how you speak. I'm limited on time here, polyamorous, but Seattle, you need to lower the voting age to twelve. That's about Black power. Black power means empowering of all people to get us to the utopian world we need to get to, and the world, the entire nation has been looking at you, Seattle, and also Portland, and y'all have not had solidarity with the five cities in Maryland that have lowered their voting age to sixteen already. You're behind them. You're behind Maine, who has already adopted ranked choice voting on a statewide level. Piss one, mess one, please go ahead and give me a phone call, because I've been trying to get in touch with you. You came to chat, but honestly, we had a lot of messages to give to you, and a lot of people were angry with you because you backed down on actually abolishing the police and actually abolished... and actually abolish the police. We need to lower that voting age to 12 because if all of y'all can remember back when you were 12, the police in our schools and the police mentality that they put on you, we had this belief that the police are these angels and need to be worshipped. We had this belief that-
Okay. And now we're gonna try caller 11 again. My list says Stifai, but I think it might be missing an N, maybe it's Stephanie Johnson-
Hello?
There we go.
Hello? Hi. Oh, hey. All right. Good afternoon, City Council members. Uh, my name is Stephanie Johnson-Tolliver, and I'm the president at the Black Heritage Society of Washington State and the co-chair at the Historic Central Area Arts and Culture District. I'm here today to support the nomination of the honorary street name for Douglas Q Barnett. Um, you're hearing today from, um, I hopefully other community members, friends, and family about Mr. Barnett's contributions to Seattle's theatrical community. I want you to know how trusted and respected and treasured he was as a historian with extensive knowledge for the regional Black history. He was always available to share his knowledge. Um, he was published, um, and co-authored historic content for regional collections at Black Past and History Link, um, that reached hundreds of people. He was a personal, uh, go-to for me. I miss him. To his achievement, um, behalf of BHS, um, please recognize Doug Barnett. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. I'm glad we were finally able to, um, make that connection. I'm so sorry about the technologically snafus. Thanks for hanging tight, really appreciate it. Next up is Eric Salinger, followed by Daniel Hepner.
Um, hi, I, I hope you can hear me. Uh, is this, is this on?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, cool. Hi, my name is Eric Salinger. I live in District 7, uh, because I haven't left the city yet. Uh, the reason I'm calling mostly is because I wanted to talk about what happened last week. Uh, somebody passed out a fake flyer to a bunch of homeless people where no one could breathe, saying that the Hyatt was gonna put them up in rooms. So a bunch of homeless people went to the Hyatt, and, uh, the Hyatt manager called the police department, and Seattle Police showed up. For the money that we spent telling homeless people that they couldn't have air to breathe because of that police response and their hourly rate, we could have just bought them hotel rooms, not even at a discount rate, at the rate which I could get online. The money we spent telling homeless people that they didn't deserve clean air is the money that we could have spent to put them in hotel rooms. Not one person who showed up from the city, and by that I mean the police response, tried to offer anything resembling compassion towards those homeless people. They just wanted them out of the city and, more importantly, out of that hotel to breathe the garbage air. So I think we do need to defund the police department because this is ridiculous. I just-
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Daniel Hepner, followed by Jack Gentile.
Hi, y'all. I'm a District 6 voter. I'm calling about the veto override vote that is tomorrow. I want you all on the reasons that you should override because you've heard them all by now, uh, but I have many friends across every district in Seattle who are too busy to call in today, so I'm calling in on behalf of all of them. I call to tell you that of all the votes this year, this is the one that matters most to us. Uh, no amount of crosswalks and bus lanes will make up for, uh, not overriding the mayor's vote, so please override the veto, uh, tomorrow. Thank you.
Next up is Jack Gentile, followed by Aisling Cooney.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, excellent. Um, hi, my name is Jack Gentile, and I'm here, um, asking, well, begging the Seattle City Council to please overturn this veto. Um, I don't know how many of you have been boots-on-the-ground protesters, but I have, and there's nothing quite like having to teach a child who isn't taller than your hip how to wash tear gas off of her body, and having to rescue a homeless man who was swept up in the kettling and being tear gassed and chased and attacked by Seattle PD with absolutely no provocation, not that any sort of provocation would, you know, justify that kind of response. I don't understand how you all can just ignore what's going on, and you need to think about that.
Okay, our last speaker who is signed up and present is, uh, Aisling Cooney. Do we have, uh, Speaker number 32 on the line? If so-
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm Ashleen, and I am a D7 resident. I'm calling to urge my council member, Andrew Lewis, to vote to overturn the mayor's veto. It is the will of the people that the mayor be recalled. However, it's been tied up in the courts for so long, please don't give her her way. We're trying to recall her anyways. If you fail to overturn this, you are slapping in the face every activist who's been working for years and who you've been listening to for months, but I mean, I can't confirm this, but I've gotten a screenshot from someone that shows that during this public comment, Andrew Lewis has been playing div five. So I would just like to put that out there because as someone who's been brutalized by the police and calling in, I've even spoken to the Seattle IG, I've spoken to our representative, Jaya Powell, I've spoken to everyone I can, but no one is listening. Protesters are being held handcuffed behind their backs for five hours. I have lasting permanent nerve damage. This is a form of torture, and I don't know who to reach out to anymore because, uh, all of my elected officials are failing us and letting this happen every week. Please help, and please overturn the veto.
Okay, colleagues, that concludes public comment. Uh, thank you so much for allowing us a little bit more time to get through the full list. Um, we are gonna go ahead and move to items of business on the agenda. First up is payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the titles?
Excuse me, Council Bill 119892, a property management pay started claims to the week of September 7th, 2020 through September 11th, 2020, and ordering the payment thorough.
Thank you. I moved to pass Council Bill 119892. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the bill pass. Are there any comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill? Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbl?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed? The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Committed reports of the City Council, Agenda Item 1. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 1 into the record?
The report of the City Council, Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119881, relating to renovating Key Arena at the sales center operating the mayor, or the mayor says he needs to execute an agreement with the Seattle Arena Company LLC to establish roles and responsibilities for coordinating the design and constructing the transit-only lanes on Queen Anne Avenue North and First Avenue North, a transit queue jump at First Avenue North and Republican Street, design upgrades for the protection bicycle lane, and additional improvements to Thomas Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 1019881. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Juarez, as sponsor, you are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. As the clerk stated, I'll just state, uh, be a little bit more brief. This legis- legislation, as I shared this morning, does authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with ArenaCo to coordinate design and construction of street improvements and pedestrian and bike improvements. ArenaCo, as I shared this morning, is responsible for contributing $594,000 of the estimated total cost of $990,000 for the improvement. The Seattle Department of Transportation would fund the balance of the cost of the project, approximately $396,000, through a credit to the street use fees that ArenaCo would otherwise owe for the redevelopment project. ArenaCo is expected to owe a total of approximately $3.5 million in street use fees associated with the project, and the MOA requires that the credited fees only be used for the design and construction of the transit improvements. Additionally, the memorandum of agreement specifies that ArenaCo would install a set of additional improvements for SDOT. The additional improvements include, and I just have five of them here briefly, raised driveways and concrete barriers for protected bicycle lanes, green bicycle boxes, new signage at unsignalized intersections, Thomas Street bicycle and signal improvements, and a curb extension on the northwest corner of Thomas Street and First Avenue North. In total, SDOT staff estimate the combined street use of fee credits of $841,000 resulting from the proposed MOA for installation of both the transit improvements and the additional improvements. The Seattle Municipal Code, SMC 1504100, allows for the SDOT director to credit up to $300,000 in use fees from an individual project in exchange for voluntary transportation improvements of equal value. Credits above this amount must be approved by Seattle City Council, and council authorization would be granted through passage of this bill, Council Bill 119881. Therefore, I would recommend council pass this legislation. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez, for, um, those remarks and those comments on the bill. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill? Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbl?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed? The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda Item 2, will the clerk please read Agenda Item 2 into the record?
Agenda Item 2, Clerk File 314457, Office of City Auditor's request for one-year suspension of a citywide financial condition report pursuant to Seattle Municipal Code Section 3.40.060.
Thank you. I move to approve and file Clerk File 314457. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and file the clerk file. Councilmember Musceta, I believe this is, um, a item that you have sponsored and are recognized in order to address it.
Uh, thank you very much, Council President. Beginning three years ago, we asked the City Auditor's Office for an independent analysis of the city's financial indicators and trends to allow for us the ability to make the best decisions for the city budget pursuant to SMC 3.040.060. The City Auditor has prepared that analysis in September of 2017 and May of 2019, and the next biennial report would have been due this September. Earlier this month, the City Auditor, um, asked for suspension of this requirement for two reasons, and first, I want to say thank you to the Council President and your office as well for engaging in this conversation and your leadership on this effort. We discussed with the council, uh, sorry, with the City Auditor, the two reasons. First was the economic downturn of COVID, and the City Auditor did not believe that the reporting covering financial conditions and trends through December 2019 would have provided council with any insight for the period that followed COVID-19 outbreak. And the second reason for moving forward with this today is that the City audited the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR, for the fiscal year of 2019, and it was not even completed until a month ago. So he requested, um, he also requested a long-term consideration of the best vehicle for a council to have up-to-date information about the city's fiscal health and condition, an issue that will likely need to be picked up next year. After consulting with the Council President and under the guidance of the central staff, who is incredible, we agreed that the report would not be provided in a timely or useful manner this year for council to begin its budget considerations, and thus, I am supporting, um, this piece of legislation in front of us, item number two, and encourage folks to vote yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Musceta, appreciate that. Are there any additional comments on the clerk file? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the approval and filing of the clerk file? Lewis?
Hi.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbl?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed? The motion carries and the clerk file is approved and filed. New item number three from the amended agenda, please read New Item 3 into the record.
New Agenda Item 3, Council Bill 119889, relating to historic preservation and imposing controls upon the Villa Camini, a landmark designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board under Chapter 25.12 of Seattle Municipal Code, and adding it to the table of historical landmarks contained in Chapter 25.32 of the Seattle Municipal Code.
Thank you so much. I move to pass Council Bill 119889. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have been seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Strauss, as sponsor, you are recognized in order to address this bill.
Thank you, Council President, and, uh, thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for your grace of me not briefing you more than two minutes before this, uh, council meeting began. Uh, this would be coming forward, this legislation, as this is in your district, Councilmember Peterson. Uh, this legislation would impose controls and incentives on the Villa Camini Building, which has been designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board. The Villa Camini is located at 1205 42nd Street in University District. It is a seven-unit, two-story apartment building with mostly three and four-bedroom units, and it was built in 1924. It is being designated in recognition of its distinctive characteristics of the eclectic style of architecture, mixing Spanish Mediterranean and colonial revival elements. The controls and incentives, uh, cover the site and exterior of the building and have been agreed upon by the Landmark, Landmarks Board and the property yard. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill? Lewis?
Hi.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbl?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed? The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, item three, will the clerk please read item three from the published agenda into the record?
From the published agenda, the report of the Governance Education Committee, Agenda Item 3, Resolution 31933, extending the requirements for the summary of the school notes that accompanies new legislation so that it also considers impacts of climate change. The committee recommends that the resolution be adopted as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm the chair of this committee and would ordinarily provide the, uh, brief committed report, but in this instance, Councilmember Peterson is the prime sponsor of this resolution, and so I am going to, as the chair of the committee, uh, defer to him as the prime sponsor of this resolution. Councilmember Peterson, please.
Thank you, Council President Gonzalez, and thank you and your team for getting this Resolution 31933 onto the agenda of your governance committee during this busy time, and I want to thank the committee for their unanimous approval of this resolution. I'd also like to thank those who took the time to contact us in support of this resolution, including Dr. Kathy Tuttle, who originated this excellent idea, Katie Wilson of the Transit Riders Union, Vlad Gutman of the Washington State Director of Climate Solutions, Dr. Arvia Morris, and several other important environmental scientists and advocates. Colleagues, it's a time, it's timely to approve this climate change resolution today because, as we know, our nation has been enduring another historically horrible wildfire season with harmful smoke contaminating the air we breathe here in Seattle. Last month, King County updated its climate plan, and like the resolution before you today, it appropriately addresses both carbon emissions and adaptation, or resiliency, to climate change. King County's progress is a powerful reminder that City Hall can do more to address climate change, too. Today, we have this legislative vehicle, Resolution 31933, to do something more, specifically to update the summary and fiscal note, to view each piece of the city legislation through a climate lens. How will it impact climate change, specifically emissions and resiliency? Just asking these two questions on emissions and adaptation is an important step forward and will provide council members with a more comprehensive view when making legislative decisions. It's important to note that the resolution will require the executive to report back to council in March about the initial results of implementation, including any ideas for making it better. Council President, may I move for pass- King County's progress is a powerful reminder that City Hall can do more to address climate change, too. Today, we have this legislative vehicle, Resolution 31933, to do something more, specifically to update the summary and fiscal note to view each piece of the city legislation through a climate lens. How will it impact climate change, specifically emissions and resiliency? Just asking these two questions on emissions and adaptation is an important step forward and will provide council members with a more comprehensive view when making legislative decisions. It's important to note that the resolution will require the executive to report back to council in March about the initial results of implementation, including any ideas for making it better. Council President, may I move for passage of Resolution 31933?
That is not necessary, but we will just call the roll on it in a moment since it's a resolution. But at this point, I'm going to go ahead and invite other colleagues to provide comments on the resolution, as is tradition and required by the rules. You'll have the last word, and we'll close the debate out to the extent that there is any. Are there any additional comments? Councilmember Musqueta, please, and then Councilmember Morales.
Thank you very much, Council President. I also want to thank Councilmember Peterson. Thank you for your work with our office to include some of the modifications into this resolution. We really appreciate that the substitute added language under climate impacts and climate resiliency sections that calls out potential intersections of carbon emissions impact and race and social justice impacts. We know that climate change disproportionately impacts Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities and low-income workers. And this language really helps focus that analysis to make sure we're considering climate justice, not just climate change. We are also appreciative of the added prompt to describe the potential impacts on emissions and climate resiliency, not just the, not just the fact that we're implementing policy or projects, because it's important that our climate analysis look at the bigger picture to understand the trade-offs around action or inaction, as we discussed at community, I mean, as we discussed at the committee meetings. So I think that that's a really important add. Thank you for all of your work on this, and I think this effort helps us move in a more strategic way towards a dynamic fiscal note as we're constantly trying to improve the process for fiscal notes to look at the trade-offs between action or inaction, the cost of doing something or the cost of not doing something. This is an important element to that discussion, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Musqueta, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Peterson for bringing this. I think we are asking the right questions with this addition to the fiscal note about the resulting carbon emissions and about our climate resiliency. Not being a member of that committee, I am curious if there's any information, specific information, you could provide about the kind of analysis that will be done and who will be doing it? If this information will be coming directly to central staff to report out to us on our summaries, or if it will be central staff doing this? I'd just like a little bit more information if that's something you can provide.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Morales. So, the legislation, since so much of the legislation will come actually through from the executive, we did vet it and talk carefully with the Office of Sustainability and Environment, as well as the City Budget Office. I also talked to Dan Eater of Central Staff about it, because obviously, Central Staff will also be working on legislation that we originate. And this is a qualitative response, so that the diversion of the fiscal note in front of us today, it's one of the attachments on the agenda. It asks the big-picture questions about emissions and adaptation, and then it provides some suggestions on how that information could be provided. So, OSCE is likely to work with other city departments to sort of train the trainers in, so that the whole city government is really thinking about this. And instead of just having, you know, a couple of experts in a key department like OSCE, the idea is to have this permeate through our entire city government as viewing things through the lens of climate change.
Are there any other questions or comments on this resolution? Councilmember Herbold, please.
Thank you. Just for clarification's sake, Councilmember Peterson, you'd referenced that there'd be a report back from the Budget Office and the Office of Sustainability and the Environment in March. But do I understand correctly that this new requirement does not wait to go into effect until that March report? In fact, it goes into effect, and then they're reporting back to us on what worked and what didn't work, but sort of through a practice of preparing these additional fiscal notes on climate and resiliency.
Correct. And we work those dates out with them as well to make sure that it'll start January 1st, but then they'll report back to us in three months after that.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the resolution? Okay, hearing none, Councilmember Peterson, anything else you'd like to add before we call the roll?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales? Musqueta?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Zawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The resolution is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Report of the Finance and Housing Committee, will the clerk please read the short title of Agenda Item Four into the record?
The Report of the Finance and Housing Committee, Agenda Item Four, Council Bill 119886 relating to the transfer of city property located at 722 18th Avenue, Seattle, Washington, operating the conveyance of the property to Bird Bar Place, a Washington nonprofit corporation, consistent with the intent of Resolution 31856, and to provide for the continued delivery of social services. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Musqueta, as chair of the committee, you are recognized in order to provide the committee report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, I'm really excited about this piece of legislation in front of us. This is a piece of legislation that the community has been advocating for many years, as we heard in the committee presentation. Almost a decade of work has gone into securing the site that Bird Bar has offered. This is a site that has nurtured and invested in community, and now the individuals who work at Bird Bar, the community that is supporting Bird Bar, are awaiting ownership to implement improvements and plan for the future. We had a discussion in the Finance and Housing Committee last week and heard from the mayor's office, OPCD, Department of Neighborhoods, and Bird Bar themselves directly about the process to get here. Bird Bar, by way of background, has served Seattle residents for over 50 years, providing basic human services like housing assistance, energy assistance, food bank, and personal financial resources, with special attention given to individuals from diverse backgrounds, such as making sure that our elders, our immigrants and refugees, and people with disabilities have their needs met, that power is not shut off, that eviction assistance is provided to those who are struggling to make ends meet. This building is an anchor in the community. The building, it also houses a community food bank. And in hearing from Andrea Copeland, the Bird Bar spokesperson, about what this transfer means, it means that the organization will be able to have its roots firmly in community and be able to invest in building on the property in the ways that have been long awaited by the community. And that is also important to have ownership in this transfer. This is one of several mutual and offsetting benefit sites, or MOB sites, that the city currently owns. But for all intents and purposes, the community organization that is leasing the site from the city has been the longtime steward and has taken ownership and responsibility for the site in all ways but the deed entitled. So, in late 2018, the council passed a resolution committing to collaborate with the executive to ensure the transfer of the property and ensure that there was a recognition of the residents who've been there and to move the site over to their ownership in March of 2019. It has been a long process in getting here to this point today. I'm excited to move this forward. We did ask the question in committee about long-term leases, like 99-year leases versus outright ownership. And I know that this is a question I will continue to be asking about MOBs. I know that there's other council members, Councilmember Peterson, thank you for bringing this up in the past as well, to see what is the best use of public sites. And in this situation, hearing directly from Bird Bar and the folks in the executive's office and departments, I'm fully supportive of transferring this over, would encourage your support and move that we consider this today.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Musqueta, for that committee report. Are there any other comments on the bill? Councilmember Zawant?
Thank you. Congratulations to all the community members who have for years advocated for the Bird Bar Place and the Central Area Senior Center properties to be transferred to these community organizations to be retained fully for public use. They have struggled through literally years of red tape to make this happen. Over a hundred of the community members, along with Bird Bar Place, the Central Area Senior Center, and Africa Town, attended an important committee meeting my office held last year on April 23rd, which was in response to the mayor's office, Mayor Durkin's office stalling progress on the community's demands. And it was really inspiring to see so many Central Area community members, most of them retirees, chanting "No more delays, no more delays", repeatedly with reference to Durkin stalling. Thanks to Andrea Copain and Diane Ferguson for their ongoing leadership. Finally, I urge Mayor Durkin's office to finalize the property transfer of the Central Area Senior Center. And in the words of Central Area Seniors, "We want no more delays." I'm happy to be voting yes on this legislation to finally transfer Bird Bar Place to the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments on the bill? Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. I just want to speak to my echoing of Councilmember Zawant's congratulations to the community for their advocacy and tireless persistence in making sure that we get this over the finish line. There are several other, as Councilmember Musqueta mentioned, mutually offsetting benefiting leases, the Central Area Senior Center, Greenwood, Finney Ridge, and South Park, among four that I can name off the top of my head. And I really urge the executive to move forward expeditiously with the transfer of these facilities as well. It has been long awaited. These properties have been assessed for their appropriateness for housing, and it is, the community has entered into many exercises with the executive under several administrations to demonstrate capacity to take over these properties. So, just want to put a call out for the executive to work with those organizations that are ready to go and to provide capacity building for those organizations that still need a little bit more help. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Any other comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musqueta? Musqueta? Peterson?
Yes.
Zawant? Zawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes. And Madam Clerk, can you call Councilmember Musqueta one more time?
Councilmember Musqueta? Eight in favor, none opposed?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like we may have lost Councilmember Musqueta. Not sure what happened there, but we'll go ahead and say that the bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Report of the Community Economic Development Committee, Item Five. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item Five into the record?
The Report of the Community Economic Development Committee, Agenda Item Five, Council Bill 119887, relating to community involvement and the oversight of the Equitable Development Initiative, establishing a permanent equitable development initiative EDI Board, and adding new Section 3.14.994, .995, .996, .997, and .998 to Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends the bill pass as amended.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales, as chair of the committee, you are recognized in order to provide the committee's report.
You're Council President. Colleagues, Council Bill 119887 is to establish a permanent equitable development initiative advisory board. This legislation implements the directive from council from a few years ago, asking the Office of Planning and Community Development to recommend a permanent structure, the EDI Advisory Board. The legislation creates a permanent board with 13 members. We did amend it in committee so that the appointments reflect communities' input and request that there are three positions that would be appointed by the mayor, three positions appointed by the council, and seven would be appointed by the Equitable Development Initiative Advisory Board. All appointments would be confirmed by council. The legislation has been requested by organizations that represent communities of color and includes language requiring board members to be drawn from communities that are most impacted by displacement and by systemic racism. The board's duties include elevating the voices and the needs of historically marginalized communities. I'm really excited about this. This work speaks directly to the larger conversation that we're having right now about how to improve community safety. We do that by investing in healthy communities, in vibrant neighborhood commercial districts, in housing that's affordable to families, and by building affordable spaces for important community services like childcare facilities, cultural spaces, employment centers, locally-owned retailers. This EDI Advisory Board will help make these kinds of decisions about future investments. It can really build community health, wellness, and community wealth. And that's how we improve community safety. I want to thank Rainier Beach Action Coalition, City Collective, Africa Town, Multicultural Community Coalition, and all of the NRM Advisory Board members for their contribution to this work and for helping advance the creation of this permanent advisory board. And I urge passage by my colleagues today.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales, for that report. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis?
Oh, sorry, it was on mute. Yes.
Morales? Musqueta?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Zawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda Item Six, will the clerk please read Item Six into the record?
Agenda Item Six, Appointment 1615, appointment of Deontay Dampier as Member of Seattle LGBTQ Commission for Term to April 30th, 2021. The committee recommends that the appointment be confirmed.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales, as chair of the committee, you are recognized in order to provide the committee report.
Thank you, Council President. I have a quick question. We have 10 new appointments and two reappointments to some of our commissions. So, I just want to confirm that we're going to go through each one individually and not as a group.
Yeah, we're going to take those that are of different commissions separately. To the extent that they are appointments to the same commission, we can read them into the record as a whole, and you can address them at once. But this one looks like it is a standalone appointment to the LGBTQ Commission, so we'll take it as a standalone appointment.
Okay, very good. So, I will be brief. I do want to thank all of these applicants for their willingness to serve our community. Many of the new appointees have been participating in their commissions for some time as they await confirmation, and they bring many talents and experiences to this work. While I would love to honor all of them by diving deep into their bios, I do want to keep remarks very brief so that we can take these votes in sequence and go ahead and get these folks confirmed. So, speaking on the LGBTQ Commission, I just want to say briefly that Deontay Dampier is focusing his work on bringing HIV and AIDS awareness and LGBTQ-affirming education to marginalized communities. And as of November 2019, he's been serving at Rainier Beach High School as a Black Student Union advisor and supporting young men of color with a program called Blacks Recovering: Overcoming Trauma, Health, and Awareness.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Morales. Any comments on the appointment? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointment?
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Musqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Agenda Item Seven, will the clerk please read Item Seven into the record?
Agenda Item Seven, Appointment 1616, Appointment of Katla Skilton as member Seattle Commission for People with Disabilities for term to October 31st, 2020. The committee recommends that the appointment be confirmed.
Councilmember Morales, this is also part of your committee, so you are recognized in order to provide the Committee's report.
Thank you. Kaitlin Skilton is being appointed to the People with Disabilities Commission. She was born with spina bifida and other underlying disabilities. She was recently crowned and is the current title holder for Miss Wheelchair Washington America and has worked with raw artists, Seattle, and numerous showcases, and wants to contribute her lived experience and her passion for working with community to serve on this commission.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on the appointment? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the confirmation of the appointment?
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musketa?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Item Eight, will the clerk read Item Eight into the record?
Agenda Item Eight, Appointment 1621, Appointment of Holly Morris Jacobson as member Seattle Arts Commission for term to December 31st, 2021. The committee recommends that the appointment be confirmed.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Morales, as Chair of the Committee, you are recognized in order to provide the Committee's report.
Thank you. Holly Jacobson has a background in nonprofit management, strategic planning, and communications. In 2003, she founded Voter Action, which is a national nonprofit that aims to secure accurate election systems. And she is currently serving as Executive Director of Path with Art, an organization that connects artists to low-income adult, connects the arts with low-income adults living in or recovering from trauma. She is being appointed to the Seattle Arts Commission.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on the appointment? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the confirmation of the appointment?
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musketa?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Items nine through 11, will the clerk please read Agenda Items nine through 11 into the record?
Agenda Items nine through 11, Appointment 1622 through 1624, appointments of Paula Olivia Nava Madrigal, Judy Rafaela Martinez, and Terry D. Morgan as members of Seattle Music Commission for term to August 31st, 2021. The committee recommends that the appointment be confirmed.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Morales, as Chair of the Committee, you are recognized in order to provide the report.
Thank you. Paula is being appointed to the Seattle Music Commission. She's a professional cellist and one of a small percentage of female conductors in the United States. She's committed to social justice and inclusion in music education and believes that all children deserve to receive musical education, no matter their social, racial, or economic situation. She is from Mexico, where she studied cello, and is here to serve in her capacity as a musician and an educator to provide that information, that experience, to the Seattle Music Commission. Should I just read all three then? Okay. Judy Rafaela is also being appointed to the Music Commission. Judy, also known as Kitty Wu, is the co-director of 206 Zulu, an outlet for community empowerment, education, and social change. She's the co-producer of the Coolout Network, a music program that began airing on Seattle Public Access Television in 1991 to showcase Seattle's hip-hop scene. And Terry Morgan is founder and president of Modern Enterprises LLC, where he's been serving clients since 1979, providing talent production and technical services and entertainment services for clients. He is a performing musician and has worked with booking talent and design sound environments for clients, and is also himself a musician with Leroy Bell and His Only Friends. All three are being appointed to the Seattle Music Commission.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on these appointments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the confirmation of the appointments?
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Musketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The motion carries and the appointments are confirmed. Agenda Items 12 and 13, will the clerk please read Agenda Items 12 and 13 into the record?
Agenda Items 12 and 13, Appointments 1625 and 1626, Appointments of Ryan Baldwin and Star Farinas Dormanesh as members of Seattle Human Rights Commission for term to January 22nd, 2021. The committee recommends that the appointment be confirmed.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales, as Chair of the Committee, you are recognized in order to provide the Committee report on these two appointments.
Thank you. Ryan Baldwin is a, has spent a military career in the Army and as a member of the LGBTQ community, is married to an immigrant spouse. So he feels a real understanding of the challenges faced by populations that are marginalized and wishes to serve in a capacity to advocate for justice and equal opportunity for all Seattle residents. Starr is a child of Iranian refugees and wants to volunteer in a meaningful way. She serves as a project manager for the Seattle Cancer Care Alliance and wants to bring her experience navigating difficult topics and projects that better serve patients to her work as a Seattle Human Rights Commissioner by serving on the Health Subcommittee there.
Are there any comments on the appointments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the confirmation of the appointments?
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Musketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The motion carries and the appointments are confirmed. Items 14 through 19, will the clerk please read Items 14 and 17 through 19 into the record?
Agenda Items 14, 17 through 19, Appointments 1620 and 1630 through 1632, Appointments of, reappointments of Jennifer Gordon, Marcia Wright Soika, Rhonda Carter, and Zoe Chirwood as members of Seattle Women's Commission for term to July 1st, 2021. The committee recommends that these appointments be confirmed.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales, as Chair of the Committee, you are recognized in order to provide the Committee's report.
Thank you. I want to apologize, colleagues. I don't actually have the appointment packets for the two reappointments, but I know that Zoe and Rhonda have been serving on the Women's Commission and providing excellent service and experience to the Commission and to the work that they're doing. Jennifer Gordon is a military veteran. She's a registered nurse and a public health graduate student who is looking forward to serving on the Health Subcommittee in particular and feels that at this time of significant growth and change in our community, she wants to participate on the Women's Commission in order to make sure that women have a seat at the table in everything that the city is doing. Marcia Wright Soika is the Regional Director of Philanthropy for Mercy Housing. She has spent a decade serving in women and girls empowerment organizations and as Director of Development and Communications for YWCA Delaware. Her volunteerism has centered on anti-racist, anti-poverty, women's rights, and creating diversity in boardrooms. And Marcia is, has been serving on the Seattle Women's Commission and looks forward to having her appointment confirmed.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on the appointments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the confirmation of the appointments?
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Musketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The motion carries and the appointments are confirmed. Okay, the report of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, Item 20, will the clerk please read the short title of Item 20 into the record?
The report of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, Agenda Item 20, Council Bill 119879, relating to the operation and maintenance of a new regional 800 megahertz emergency public safety radio communication system. The committee recommends that the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbold, as Chair of the Committee, you are recognized in order to address this item and provide the Committee report.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 119879, the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network interlocal agreement authorizes a new digital radio system primarily used for emergency response. This system replaces a 20-year-old analog system, no longer supported by the vendor. The passage of this legislation will authorize the city to enter into a, an interlocal agreement between 12 King County jurisdictions, including King County, and will create a new nonprofit to own, operate, and maintain this radio network. This nonprofit will be called P CERN, again for the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network. The new network, once completed in 2023, will provide 97% reliability at street level in the King County area. This is an increase over the previous system, and the goal is to have all 12 parties approve the interlocal agreement by mid-September. 50% of the cities and agencies have already signed on.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the passage of the bill?
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Yes.
Musketa?
Aye.
Excuse me. Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Report of the Transportation and Utilities Committee, Item 20, will the clerk please read the short title of Item 21 into the record?
The report of the Transportation Committee, Agenda Item 21, Council Bill 119883, amending orders 22600, which adjusts the 2020 budget, including 2025, 2020 through 2025 capital investment program, revising project allocations for the Madison BRT, Rapid-G Line project, and certain other projects, and coordinate 226000. The committee recommends that the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, as Chair of the Committee, you are recognized in order to provide the Committee's report.
Thank you, Council President Gonzalez. This is Council Bill 119883. It's legislation from our Seattle Department of Transportation. It will allocate more city tax dollars for the Madison Street Rapid Ride Bus Project, serving City Council Districts, or City Council Districts 3 and 7. To qualify the project for a relatively large grant from the Federal Transit Administration, the FTA required SDOT to provide a longer schedule and to fund a larger contingency. So the budget here is increasing from $121 million to $134 million. $5 million of that increase is coming from city tax dollars. I want to thank SDOT and the City Budget Office for honoring my request to beef up their fiscal note that accompanied this council bill to show the public the, all the sources and uses of funds, so we know where the money's coming from and how it's being spent more clearly. The sources and uses, they illuminate several points. First, the good news, only about 17% of this funding for this project is from city tax dollars. The purpose of the legislation, however, is to increase the amount coming from the city and to update the budget in general. This does have an impact to projects, and this fiscal note helps to explain that. I want to make sure we keep a close eye on this project going forward, as with all big-ticket SDOT projects. We want to make sure it's managed effectively. I do have confidence in SDOT's ability to complete the project and supporting this bill today. I will be cautious in the future about diverting additional flexible city dollars toward big-ticket projects like this during an era of budget deficits. We know the city has a lot of pressing maintenance needs, such as repairing our old bridges through our, throughout our city, as we heard last week with the city auditors' report on bridges. At the same time, the climate note that we just passed would probably point out that the net benefits of this project by reducing carbon emissions, by getting people out of their single occupancy gasoline-powered vehicles, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any comments on this bill? Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chair Peterson, for bringing this forward. The Madison Bus Rapid Transit Project is very high priority for me. We know that the rapid rides of Seattle and King County are not quite bus rapid transit. Bus rapid transit has its own lanes, level boarding, all-door boarding, and when bus rapid transit is able to be successful with all of its implements, then it can meet, the similar reliability is light rail, plus or minus about three minutes. We know that people will be more able to use and rely on transit when transit has a reliable travel time from its, from when you pick it up to where you're going. If you know how long it's going to take every time you ride the bus, you're more likely to take it. Also, we need to be able to have reliability within our city to have buses arrive every 10 to 15 minutes on corridors such as the Madison BRT. We know that in places like, again, Eugene, Oregon, who has true bus rapid transit, they are able to meet these frequency levels of service that our city so desperately needs. And so by creating own, transit-only lanes throughout the city is going to be one way of doing that. And overall, we need to have more projects like Madison BRT, and so this ranks very high on my priority list. I'm happy to support it today, and I look forward to supporting it more in the future. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chair Peterson.
Are there any other comments on the bill? Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. So I, I really, I understand the importance of the Madison BRT Rapid Ride Line G project, and I appreciate that it's been in the works for many years. I was glad to see $7.3 million in additional funding available from Sound Transit, and $4 million in savings was available from the Lander Street Overpass Project. And SDOT gets the credit for managing the Lander Street Over Project, Overstreet Project in a way that allows this fund to be, funds to be relocated. I do have concerns about the smaller funding source for another project that's been in the works for many, many years, the Font Leroy Boulevard project, namely $918,000 previously allocated to that project is included in this reallocation. One constituent, when we actually voted on this reallocation in the 2020 rebalancing package, and this is a separate vote to align the CIP with, for 2020 with that vote, but when we took that vote earlier, a constituent reminded me that planning work for this project goes back over 20 years. The project originated with community, which is on a pedestrian, unfriendly city, in a very, very dense and increasingly dense area in an urban village. Last week, during Transportation and Utilities Committee, I had to leave for another meeting, and I wasn't able to bring this up during committee. Thank you to Chair Peterson for doing so. You know, it's, again, important to realize that 100% design for the Font Leroy project was reached in fall of 2017. I supported the delay of that project in January 2018 because the project overlaps with one of the options under consideration for Sound Transit's light rail project. Consequently, implementation was delayed until completion of the EIS process. But I only supported the delay of the project because we also received a very strong commitment from SDOT about the funds that had been allocated for the project. And SDOT's Font Leroy project website notes, "Sound Transit's decision on light rail alignment is the next step," and they go on to say, and I quote, "We remain committed to the goals of the Font Leroy Boulevard project. If Sound Transit's light rail design for West Seattle does not impact Font Leroy Way, we will move forward with the full project as designed. If Sound Transit's design impacts Font Leroy Way, we will work with Sound Transit to implement streetscape improvements on Font Leroy Way that align improvements on Font Laroie Way that align with the goals of the Font Laroie Boulevard Project." Now, it appears that SDOT is planning to propose redirecting not only these funds in 2020, which I agreed to in principle, but a significant amount of the thirteen million listed in the CIP for the project in the proposed, we, I, I believe they are going to make this proposal in the 2021 budget. Central staff estimates involve a nine-million-dollar redirection. So Sound Transit's draft EIS is scheduled for early next year, and the final EIS for 2022, it seems very premature to reallocate funding for the project in advance of that decision. I definitely appreciate that SDOT did some short-term improvements with the over thirteen million dollars allocated for, for this area, for transportation improvements in this area. They did so a couple summers ago, but those were definitely intended as temporary improvements and not a substitute for the project. I recognize that this issue is tangential to funding for the Madison Street Rapid Ride. It only affects a small portion of the new project funding. I want to make sure that I state my concerns in advance of the 2021 budget. I let SDOT know after the committee vote last week that my support for the Madison BRT funds is strong, but that I was seeking a commitment from SDOT to reconsider this plan to divert between nine to thirteen million dollars from the Font Laroie Project in 2021. I believe their doing so is a real mistake, and the community would feel, and I would as well, that a promise was broken if SDOT moves forward with what I understand is a 2021 decision to divert the rest of those funds. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on the bill? Councilmember Peterson, please.
Just, I want to thank Councilmember Herbert for bringing up that issue that, you know, this, I know we don't want to live in an austerity budget scenario, and, and, and yet there, there is a budget deficit. And so during the 2021 budget, we'll have lots of, we'll say, robust discussions about, you know, how to allocate funding. And Councilmember Herbert, I'd be happy to work with you, you know, if that budget comes down and, and that project is negatively impacted, we can, you know, happy to, happy to be an ally as we try to find funding from other projects that may not be as much of a priority as Font Laroie.
Thank you for that.
Are there any other comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbert.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item twenty-two. Will the clerk read the short title of item twenty-two into the record?
Agenda item twenty-two, Council Bill 119857, relating to the City Light Department, clarifying that residents living in the City Light Department-owned housing in the Diablo and New Halim communities are subject to the City Light Department's rates. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson is Chair of the Committee. You're recognized in order to provide the Committee's report.
Thank you, Council President. Council Bill 119857 simply clarifies that residents of housing owned by Seattle at the Skagit Hydro Project pay regular rates for electricity. The only exceptions are if otherwise provided in a collective bargaining agreement or by explicit terms in a hiring letter. Council Bill 119857 passed the Transportation Utilities Committee unanimously.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbert.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item twenty-three. Will the clerk read the short title? Oops, excuse me. Did we just do item twenty-three? Or do we?
You're on target.
It is twenty-three, right?
Correct.
Okay, sorry. Well, will the clerk please read the short title of item twenty-three into the record?
Agenda item twenty-three, Council Bill 119870, related to the City Light Department. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item twenty-two and twenty-three read so similar on my script. I thought I had lost sequencing here. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Councilmember Peterson is Chair of the Committee. You're recognized in order to provide the Committee report.
Thank you, Council President. Council Bill 119870, the Ponderay River Hydro Project provides a significant percentage of Seattle City Light's electricity. As a result of agreements made during original federal licensing process, Seattle City Light pays compensation for project impacts in that county and other local governments throughout. City Light's obligation to provide this funding is required by state law, RCW 35.21.420. This bill renews a ten-year agreement. Council Bill 119870 passed the Transportation Utilities Committee unanimously.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Purple.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item twenty-four. Will the clerk please read the short title of item twenty-four into the record?
Agenda item twenty-four, Council Bill 119871, relating to the City Light Department, establishing updated eligibility requirements for net metering and customer requested net metering aggregation billing arrangements. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson is Chair of the Committee. You're recognized in order to provide the Committee report.
Thank you. As we know, net metering is the electrical billing system whereby customers of Seattle City Light get to roll the meter backwards if they generate power with solar panels. There are two changes. This would shift the calendar year for calculating the quantity of solar electricity that customers have provided to City Light, and it will allow customers to combine two-meters aggregation for purposes of calculating the quantity. These changes to City Light's net metering program are required by state law and are very modest in impact. The Council Bill 119871 passed the Transportation and Utilities Committee unanimously.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbert.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item twenty-five. Will the clerk please read the short title of item twenty-five into the record?
Agenda item twenty-five, Council Bill 119885, relating to the City Light Department, amending section 21.49.084 of the sound code to enable a broader suite of voluntary renewable energy programs options to City Light customers. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson is Chair of the Committee. You are recognized in order to provide the Committee report.
Thank you, Council President. This is another minor Seattle City Light measure that facilitates green energy projects. It broadens the scope of projects that customers can participate in. The ability to provide green energy for low-income households is made easier by this. There are no fiscal impacts to Seattle City Light. Council Bill 119885 passed the Transportation and Utilities Committee unanimously.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbert.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Adoption of Other Resolutions, item twenty-six. Will the clerk please read the short title of item twenty-six into the record?
Adoption of Other Resolutions, agenda item twenty-six, Resolution 31968, providing an honorary designation of East Union Street between Thirty-Fourth Avenue and Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Douglas Q Barnett Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to adopt Resolution 31968. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Sawant, you are the prime sponsor and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. I'm really happy and proud to sponsor this resolution for, for an honorary street designation of a portion of East Union Street between Thirty-Fourth, Thirty-Fourth and Thirty-Fifth Avenue in District Three in honor of Douglas Q Barnett, who played a monumental role in developing theater in Seattle's Black community over the course of his life. He founded New Black Arts West, headed up over forty productions and acted in over thirty. Thank you so much to Mr. Barnett's family, Eric and Maisha Barnett, Stephanie Johnson, and other community members who testified in public comment and who have also written to my office and to the Department of Transportation over the course of the last few weeks. Also, thank you so much to Kibibi Monet, who first approached my office with this proposed street naming. New Black Arts West was established in the central area in the nineteen-sixties, first performing at the Douglas Truth Library, moving to the building that is now Bird Bar Place, before eventually moving to East Union Street, a few blocks from the Seattle offices of the Black Panther Party. And I think that this is a happy coincidence that the City Council will be voting on this street naming on the same day that the Central District Post Office has also opened up in, in our, in the same neighborhood. And also, once again, thanks to the advocacy of the local community members. Mr. Barnett's legacy is an important part of the central area history, and it is clear from the community members who spoke today and have spoken in the past, have discussed, and have discussed his legacy with my office, that Mr. Barnett has had an incredible impact on our community and our city and is very much missed. And this renaming commemorates appropriately the legacy he leaves behind him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for those remarks and for bringing forward this resolution. Are there any comments on the resolution? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution? Madam Clerk, you might be a mute.
Excuse me. Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Mosqueta. Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbert.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The resolution is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda item twenty-seven. Will the clerk read the short title of item twenty-seven into the record?
Agenda item twenty-seven, Resolution 31969, setting the time and place for a hearing on the appeal of due bond from the findings and recommendations report of the hearing examiner on the final assessment role for local improvement district number sixty-seven fifty-one.
Thank you. I will move to adopt Resolution 31969. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Juarez, you are the prime sponsor and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you. As the clerk shared, and I shared it again this morning, but briefly, again, this bill sets the time and place for the hearing regarding the waterfront lid that we have been working on for a few years now, from the findings and, or the hearing regarding the appeal, from the findings and recommendations of the report of the hearing examiner, in which that report came out last year, and then we had a recent one that just came out two weeks ago. So this will be the final assessment role for the local improvement district number six-seven-five-one. The resolution sets the hearing for December first in the Public Asset and Native Communities Committee to meet the requirements of the equal judicial rule. Council must take action this week via the resolution. This is a mandatory and procedural matter. Recommend Council confirm Resolution 31969. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Are there any comments on the resolution? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbert.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The resolution is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Other business. Is there any other business to come before the council? Okay, hearing none. Colleagues, this concludes the items of business on today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting was rescheduled to Tuesday, September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, at two o'clock PM. Again, next week's regularly scheduled City Council meeting was rescheduled to a Tuesday, September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, at two PM, in recognition and observance of Yam Kapur, which is on Monday, September twenty-eighth. The City Council will also hold a special meeting tomorrow, September twenty-second, at three o'clock PM. That does conclude all of our items of business for today, so I hope that you all have a wonderful afternoon. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.